I'd like to call a meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call a roll. Mayor Zarell here.
Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Councilor Grasso.
Here.
Councilor Long.
Here.
Councilor Heim.
Yes.
Councilor Pinalakis.
Yes.
Councilor Whitehouse.
Here.
Councilor Marconi.
Here.
Councilor St. Maron.
Here.
I'd like to ask everyone to rise for a moment of silent prayer and then Councilor Long, you'll lead us in the Pledge of Dilegence, followed by God Bless America.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
Down to the Proclamations and I'm going to ask the Assistant Mayor to read the Proclamation regarding our Fire Marshal, Charles Jones Day. He is retiring. We're gonna lose him. Good man. Assistant Mayor?
Would the Fire Marshal please stand? The City Council Chamber of City Hall, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, proclamation, whereas Fire Marshal Charles Jones has served the City of Portsmouth Fire Department for 22 years and whereas he began his career as a probationary firefighter, was named Fire Inspector in 1990 and promoted to Fire Marshal three years ago and whereas Charles has been a leading fire prevention advocate for the City of Portsmouth, conducting hundreds of classes and workshops for the children, the elderly, business owners, employees and whereas his efforts to protect the citizens of Portsmouth, the people who work here and our many visitors undoubtedly have prevented many injuries and saved countless lives and whereas Charles was instrumental in shaping the city's juvenile fire starter program, prevention program, working with at-risk juveniles and their families and whereas he has investigated hundreds of fires, large and small, and been responsible for plan review, code enforcement and prevention inquiries and whereas as a fireman, Charles belongs to an honored and exclusive group of silent heroes who protect the public safety of our communities. Now therefore, I Evelyn Zarell, the Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, do join with the members of the City Council in congratulating Charles Jones for his 22-year career with the Fire Department and with great pleasure proclaim that June 30th, 2003 shall be Fire Marshal Charles Jones Day in Portsmouth. I encourage the citizens of Portsmouth and his colleagues to join in applauding the dedication and commitment of his excellence, the excellence of Charles Jones and wish him a happy, well-deserved retirement from the Fire Department and the best of luck in his future endeavors. Give him with my hand and seal the City of Portsmouth, Evelyn Zarell, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth.
And I know you like to throw. It's all about historical Portsmouth.
Okay.
Would you like to say a few words? Good. Right up the podium. Thanks, Jeff.
I appreciate the honor. Had a lot of time to reflect recently, but certainly through my whole life, one of the things that I have thought about is that this hasn't been a sole endeavor. Firstly, it's a team effort. The Fire Department supports me in a lot of things that I do, but most of the support starts with my family, all seated in the front row here. Beyond that, the team effort really does extend to the Fire Department, the firefighters, both men and women who are out there every day and absolutely need your support. Past that, it extends to all the people that I've worked with in the city. In the back over here is some of the people, inspections, planning, Bob, John, they have both worked with me, some of the City Councilors I have worked with, Police Department, the School Department, and I guess I would say most importantly, it's been the citizens of the City of Portsmouth who really are the eyes and the ears for a lot of things that we try to protect them in any of our positions throughout the city. So, I appreciate the honor. I haven't done it by myself.
Thank you, Charles, very much. We're down to the Mayor's Award for Nate Holloway and I'm going to ask Laura Pinalakis to read this tonight. Her and Jim Splain were foremost in getting Martha Luther King Day passed in Congress. So I think it's only fitting that she reads the special letter.
Thank you, Mayor Zarell. Dear Nate, on behalf of the City of Portsmouth, I would like to thank you for your many years of volunteerism in our community, particularly your 16 years of service on the Board of Adjustment, five of them as Chairman of this important body. The Board of Adjustment has played its major role in the growth and development of our city and helped to maintain the charming quality of life that influenced your decision to retire from military here and has attracted many other citizens. As co-founder of the Portsmouth branch of the NAACP, your work on behalf of racial unity has had far-reaching effects. The NAACP is a vital organization in the Seacoast and fills an important need for our citizens. We finally have Martin Luther King Junior Civil Rights Day in New Hampshire. Thanks to the successful efforts of the Seacoast Martin Luther King Coalition, you currently Chair, and other advocacy groups in persuading the New Hampshire Legislature to adopt this holiday. I know it was a long, hard road, but you prevailed. I am pleased to see that your work and vision has been recognized by others as well and congratulate you on receiving the Vision of Race Unity Award from the Spiritual Assembly of the Bi-Ha of Exeter. Thank you, Nate, for everything you have done for the City of Portsmouth and its citizens. You are a very special person to our city and to me. One mis regards, Mayor Evelyn Zarell.
Nate, I'd like to read this. This is your Mayor's Award and it says Nate Holloway. My sincere appreciation for all of the 16 years you served as a volunteer in our community and we do appreciate it and you know the board that you were on for many, many years. Also, there's a small pin in there to the key to the city and that's a gift for you, thanking you for sharing your time and your talents, Nate. And I'd love for you to say a few words. I'm gonna give you a big hug, but I can't reach ya. Take care. Go up there.
Well, good evening. It's quite an honor to receive this award. I was one of a few that was involved in all the things that you read about me and that you said Reverend Pinalakis, son of Jim Splain, was the spearhead in the beginning of the Martin Luther King Day and with their support and the continued support of various others in the Legislature and in the City of Portsmouth. I thank you and I thank you above all for the award. And as I continue to stay on the Chair, on the Board of Adjustment, I will continue to do my best at that time when it's time to step down, be an old six, if I don't, if I can stay well long enough. And I just thank each and every one of you. God bless you.
Nate, you're gonna stay well.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Aye, yes. Councilor Grasso.
Because of this, in the end of the school year, I would, in order to allow the people in the audience a little more time at home to do reports they need to do, I'd like to suspend the rules to take up Item X1 at this time. If I could have a second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Okay. Your Honor, I'd like to move that we approve the proposed employment agreement between the Portsmouth School Board and the Association of Portsmouth Teachers for a period of July 1st, 2003 to June 30th, 2006.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? It was a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
All right. Ken? Where are we? And was you gonna bring up your co-partner here?
Yes, Mayor. Councilors, I'd like to invite both teams up, Dr. Lionel Tracy, Peter Torrey, and then also Diane McGee and Linda Burlet, please, come forward. I want to just thank you first of all for passing this contract, this three-year contract. This three-year contract that you have just passed is historic in many number of ways. First of all, it was an agreement in the time period of when finances in the City of Portsmouth are a hard and trying times at best, dealing with donor and receiving towns. I want to personally thank both Linda Burlet and Diane McGee at this time for their hard work with the unions. They did yeoman's work, they did legal work, work that normally has been done by many legal councilors to negotiate between Tom Flagart and the past Legal Counsel of Joe Campbell. It is going to be a three-year contract that we are proud to sit with our teachers, with our faculty, and tell them that they were leaders at this time of financial crisis with the City of Portsmouth. Dr. Tracy and Linda had many side discussions to get to the final night of passing this contract with the Teachers Association and without that guidance between those two leaders, we may not have had a contract settled. So I thank both them and along with Diane McGee, the President of the Teachers Association, for this three-year contract. Thank you very much for this evening's passes. It shows good unity amongst everybody in the City of Portsmouth. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken.
And I'll talk to Tracy.
I just echo what Ken had to say. We have an unusually good relationship with our teachers and Diane McGee and Linda Burlet were big-time leaders and I just wanted to share with you one of their opening remarks when we started these negotiations. Almost every person on that negotiating team lives in Portsmouth and they made it a point to tell us that they understood the financial crisis we were in, their Portsmouth residents themselves, their taxpayers, and that they were gonna work with us and they did and I think they deserve a lot of credit for that. Thank you.
They certainly do. Anyone else who'd like to say a few words? Diane, you're quiet tonight.
Thank you very much for having us here.
All right, now we are down to presentation and it's a report back on the status of the recycling ordinance and I'm gonna pass it to John.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you recall, when the City Council passed the ordinance regarding mandatory recycling, Councilor Grasso asked for a report back in June relative to our progress in this matter. Tonight, I've asked that Steve Parkinson and Silka Sula, the Solid Waste Coordinator, do about a 10-minute presentation relative to the status of this program and whenever you're ready, Silka, we're passing out the actual copies of the presentation as well.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilor. Jumping right into it, this should be a familiar screen for you, actually. I just want to give us a quick summary, get us into the flow of things.
Silka, could you probably bring the mic closer?
Sorry. If you'll recall, on the last time I did this presentation, I gave a quick summary that the current system, 24% of public works budget is solid waste and all that, so to speak, all that, $1 million goes to cover weekly curbside rubbish collection, bulky waste curbside collection, the yard waste collection, the recycling center, and twice-year household hazardous waste. To break it down even further, with regard to weekly curbside rubbish collection, waste is disposed of at a privately-owned landfill in Rochester, commonly known as Waste Management Incorporated. We pay a tipping fee of $67 per ton for municipal solid waste, basically your kitchen, bathroom, household waste, and $74 a ton for the bulky waste, your mattresses, couches, sofas, stuff like that. An average of 24 tons of municipal solid waste, again, kitchen, bathroom waste, goes up to the landfill each day. That's just from the curbside collection, not the recycling center and not bulky waste. As far as the recycling collection goes, the city contracts with a private vendor. Portsmouth recycles glass, plastic aluminum, tin and paper. We provide the bins for curbside collection for free. We also collect corrugated cardboard at the recycling center and at the public schools. In 2003, the fiscal year, it cost us $182,000 and in 2004, we have budgeted $492,000. The increase is based on the contract CPI increase. As you know, effective January 2003, the city implemented a quote-unquote "new" solid waste ordinance. I have to quantify new. It's not so much new as much as it was streamlined. You took it from four sections of ordinance, put it into one, and brought it up to date to the current needs of Portsmouth. Three significant changes were made. One, we established the recycling center. Two, we reorganized the bulky waste collection program. And three, we established mandatory recycling. So how's mandatory recycling going? There's a comparison. In 2002, calendar year, that is, in 2002, we collected 1,600 tons, a little more than 1,600. In 2003, obviously I can only provide you numbers up until May, but we've already collected 737 tons. You can see clearly January, we were almost line-in-line with last year and then we've increased from there. At this going rate, we've already diverted 72 tons from the landfill at a savings of $4,800. At this rate, we can continue to divert and project at least 212 more tons will be diverted. And there's our recycling center. The hours of operation of the recycling center, I have to quantify, are different for recyclable materials and yard waste versus your bulky waste. Recyclable materials, we have the gate open Monday through Friday, 8 to 3:30. Residents can bring their yard waste anytime they want, recyclables they can bring anytime they want. We do specify hours for bulky waste pickup or, excuse me, bulky waste drop-off because one, we want to have an attendant down there making sure that it's Portsmouth waste going to Portsmouth tax dollars paying for that. We also want to make sure that it is manned and safe, the crowd control and that the waste is separated. We also try to provide hours that were more convenient than just banker's hours. Therefore, Tuesdays and Thursdays, 8 to 3:30. Wednesdays were open late until 6:00 PM and on Saturdays, 8 to noon. At the recycling center, we'll accept from the Portsmouth residents, the lawnless, bulky waste, wood. When we say wood, it can be any kind of wood. It doesn't have to be just construction or demolition kind of wood lumber from your decking. It could be if you have an old wooden desk or chair that you want to dispose of, wood is wood and we can divert that from the landfill and dispose of it cheaper. Metal, appliances, propane tanks, tires, refrigerators, air conditioners, fluorescent light bulbs, batteries, used oil, antifreeze, and through a partnership with Goodwill, we are able to accept clothing for donation. There's the list, sorry, I was a little late on that. On an average, 87 residents visit the recycling center per day. I have to quantify this average. That does not include those who bring their yard waste. There's usually on a very nice day, weather-wise, there's usually a steady flow coming in there and Saturdays are clearly our most popular days. Over 1,000 vehicle stickers have already been issued. Effective July 1, we're requiring that vehicles will have stickers. Waste is being managed more efficiently and disposed of at an overall cheaper cost. Ultimately, residents have been overwhelmingly pleased with the service. As far as curbside collection of bulky waste, the process goes that the resident calls it in, public works schedules a pickup. We schedule it according to our waste management program. The resident will place the bulky waste curbside and ultimately, public works picks it up and disposes. We may not necessarily dispose it right away. We may bring it back to the recycling center, collect a large enough volume to economize on the hauling of it. We also establish a computer program to manage all the data that we're getting in. We purchased a gravel truck and we assigned a specific individual to the responsibility of collecting bulky waste. Collection officially began October 15th of 2002 and we get an average of nine phone calls per day. Again, I have to quantify that. We get a lot more phone calls, but inevitably, when a resident finds out that they can just bring it in instead of waiting through the cycle, they'd rather bring it in. So the nine only documents the phone calls that we've taken and scheduled the pickup. An average of eight bulky waste pickups per day. Again, I have to quantify that. During our electronics pickup week, usually we only have two to three per day. During our bulky and our woods, then we can go up to as high as 21 to 28 days. We're clearly in an upswing right now because again, it's springtime, people are cleaning up. We expect that to level off a little bit. We've actually had a total of 1,500 calls and 1,400 stops and this roughly covers a six-month time period. So there's a picture of the total waste. When I say total waste, it's municipal solid waste, recyclables, bulky waste. Your purple is 2002, your blue is 2003, clearly again, only going up to May. In 2002, the city disposed of a grand total of 8,870 tons. Thus far, in 2003, we've disposed of 3,603 tons. Year's end, we can assess the cost savings better. However, preliminary numbers do indicate we are heading in the right direction. If you compare our last bulky waste collection week, April 2002, to the waste that we've been managing over the last six months, we've clearly had a savings. To explain that to you, bulky waste collection week of April 2002 cost us 600 tons. We disposed of that at $44,000 or if you break that down, $73 per ton. With the recycling center and on-demand bulky waste collection, we've collected 515 tons. Again, we're comparing roughly six months to six months, yet we were able to dispose of that at $29,000 or $56.31 per ton. Clearly a marked saving. If we disposed of that 515 at the tonnage rate that we did the other one, we already saved just under $9,000. Quick summary of household hazardous waste. We provide that as a means for proper disposal of hazardous material frequently found in the home such as oil-based paint, stains, thinners, glues, resins. We've been doing this, or Portsmouth has been doing this, for roughly more than seven years. I even offer 10 years now. We do it within a joint effort with Newington and Greenland. Portsmouth hosts it. By sharing this program, we're able to maximize on grant money and also share the cost. Ultimately, we were invoiced this most recent household hazardous waste collection at $14,000. Ultimately, Portsmouth has only paid out $8,000 through grants and sharing the cost again with Greenland and Newington. As you know, I suspect as you know, the event is held two times a year, spring and fall, and it really is becoming ever more popular. This most recent one, we handled 254 cars. I believe they represented 301 households. Sometimes neighbors will get their neighbors to bring the stuff in and that's permissible. So a quick summary of the progress made. To reflect back in the 1990s, we disposed of all the waste at the landfill. Starting in 2001, we instituted an aggressive program to better manage the waste stream. Initiatives to save on disposal costs, reduce the amount of waste being disposed at the landfill and provide more frequent means to dispose of bulky waste and ultimately manage the waste as a storage of the environment. These objectives have been met by diverting recyclable material, bulky material and hazardous waste from this waste stream. Everything I just previously reviewed with you. All right, so now we go into our long-term objectives. We need to implement an even more cost-effective means of recycling, identifying cheaper means of disposing of municipal solid waste and bulky waste and enhance the recycling center. So what does that mean? Long terms on recycling, we're implementing even more cost-effective means of recycling includes curbside recycling collection program in the business district, what I commonly refer to as the layman in the tourist area of Portsmouth. That'll be effective July of 2003 this year. And then we're gonna revisit the city's contract for recycling, primarily revisit it because the contract with the vendor expires June of 2004. As far as long-term objectives with municipal solid waste and bulky waste, we identify cheaper means of disposing of that. We're gonna need to figure out what we want to do. The contract with the landfill expires in June 2005. By looking into possibilities of either joint ventures with neighboring municipalities, we can consolidate the volume of waste, provide for cost-sharing and better negotiating of cost hauling and disposal and/or we can look into other alternatives than the current So then the final one is the long-term objectives for the recycling center. It does need to be enhanced. It's working, but we're almost already working to an excess of success, if that's even a way to put it. We're bursting at the seams. We need to get equipment appropriate to operations, ramps, containers. We need to allow for residents easier means of disposing of their waste. We need to allow for consolidation of waste to economize on transportation and disposal and in general, we just need more space. City Council approved as part of the budget for fiscal year '04 disposal fees as of July 1, 2003. Those fees would be assessed for tires, electronics, refrigerators, air conditioners, yard waste for private, from private landscapers. I have to quantify and make sure that everybody out there listening understands residents can dispose of their yard waste for free. They can bring it to the recycling center, they can put it to the curb for free. The fees that were assessed are $5 per tire, electronics is $8 per unit, refrigerators and air conditioners or any freon containing unit, $10 per unit, and landscapers, again, a private vendor, would be charged on a vehicle size. Residents are agreeable to reasonable fees. During Household Hazardous Waste Day, we have to conduct a survey. That's more for the grant purposes, but I did add on question number nine during the survey. And basically, in 2003, 201 Portsmouth residents who took advantage of the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Service, of those 201, 162 would quote, "Support a modest disposal fee to cover disposal of items requiring extra handling or disposal requirements." I did this for a few years in a row. In spring of 2002, 107 of the 116 Portsmouth residents would support, again, quote, "a modest fee." There's our yard waste. To give you a perspective, you can see the truck and then the huge piles. That brush piles roughly, I'm usually at capacity, which I'm at now, is about 270 tons right there. In 2002, the city disposed of 2,400 tons of yard waste at a cost of $38,000. A large portion of that is from landscape contractors. Ultimately, the fee being proposed or the fee approved for charging landscape contractors, it's not the residents, is a cost of doing business, just like Portsmouth has to pay our compost facility tipping fee. Likewise, the landscape contractor would have to account for this cost too. So a quick summary. Over the past year, we've made some significant changes and improvements. We've made improvements to the new solid waste ordinance, we've enhanced services, observable cost savings in the first six months and based on the first six months, projected savings at a conservative number could be $34,500. And if you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Silka. Any questions? Yes, Brad and then Alex.
Yeah, this is a very good presentation. I think the city is not only saving money, but reducing the amount of waste we put in the landfill and reusing materials, all of which are great and we're moving in the right
To reflect back in the nineteen ninety's, we disposed of all the waste at the landfill. Starting in two thousand and one, we instituted an aggressive program to better manage the waste stream. Initiatives to save on disposal costs, reduce the amount of waste being disposed at the landfill, and provide more frequent means to dispose of bulky waste, and ultimately manage the waste as a store to the environment. These objectives have been met by diverting recyclable material, bulky material, and hazardous waste from this waste stream. Everything I just previously reviewed with you. All right, so now we go into our long-term objectives. We need to implement an even more cost-effective means of recycling. Identifying cheaper means of disposing of municipal solid waste and bulky waste and enhance the recycling center. So what does that mean? Long terms on recycling, we're implementing even more costs, more cost-effective means of recycling includes curbside recycling collection program in the business district, what I commonly refer to as the layman in the tourist area of Portsmouth. That'll be effective July of two thousand and three this year. And then, we're going to revisit the city's contract for recycling, primarily revisit it because the contract with the vendor expires June of two thousand and four. As far as long-term objectives with municipal solid waste and bulky waste, we identify cheaper means of disposing of that. We're going to need to figure out what we want to do. The contract with landfill expires in June two thousand and five. By looking into possibilities of either joint ventures with neighboring municipalities, we can consolidate the volume of waste, provide for cost-sharing, and better negotiating of cost hauling and disposal, and/or we can look into other alternatives than the current So then, the final one is the long-term objectives for the recycling center. It does need to be enhanced. It's working, but we're almost already working to, to an excess of success, if that's even a way to put it. We're bursting at the seams. We need to get equipment appropriate to operations, ramps, containers. We need to allow for residents easier means of disposing of their waste. We need to allow for consolidation of waste, to economize on transportation and disposal, and in general, we just need more space. City Council approved as part of the budget for fiscal year oh-four disposal fees as of July one, two thousand and three. Those fees would be assessed for tires, electronics, refrigerators, air conditioners, yard waste for private, from private landscapers. I have to quantify and make sure that everybody out there listening understands residents can dispose of their yard waste for free. They can bring it to the recycling center, they can put it to the curb for free. The fees that were assessed are five dollars per tire, electronics is eight dollars per unit, refrigerators and air conditioners, or any freon containing unit, ten dollars per unit, and landscapers, again, a private vendor, would be charged on a vehicle size. Residents are agreeable to reasonable fees. During Household Hazardous Waste Day, we have to conduct a survey. That's more for the grant purposes, but I did add on question number nine during the survey. And basically, in two thousand and three, two hundred and one Portsmouth residents who took advantage of the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Service, of those two hundred and one, a hundred and sixty-two would, quote, "support a modest disposal fee to cover disposal of items requiring extra handling or disposal requirements." I did this for a few years in a row. In spring of two thousand and two, a hundred and seven of the hundred and sixteen Portsmouth residents would support, again, quote, "a modest fee." There's our yard waste. To give you a perspective, you can see the truck and then the huge piles. That brush piles roughly, I'm usually at capacity, which I'm at now, is about two hundred and seventy tons right there. In two thousand and two, the city disposed of twenty-four hundred tons of yard waste at a cost of thirty-eight thousand dollars. A large portion of that is from landscape contractors. Ultimately, the fee being proposed, or the fee approved for charging landscape contractors, it's not the residents, is a, is a cost of doing business, just like Portsmouth has to pay our compost facility tipping fee. Likewise, the landscape contractor would have to account for this cost too. So, a quick summary. Over the past year, we've made some significant changes and improvements. We've made improvements to the new solid waste ordinance, we've enhanced services, observable cost savings in the first six months, and based on the first six months, projected savings at a conservative number could be thirty-four thousand five hundred. And if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Sophie. Any questions? Yes, Brad, and then Alex.
Yeah, this is a very good presentation. I think the city is not only saving money, but reducing the amount of waste we put in the landfill and reusing materials, all of which are great, and we're moving in the right direction. And it's also nice to see that the downtown business district is going to be recycling. My question is, what are the alternatives to using the turnkey when that contract expires two years from now?
I have been shopping around. One of my arguments is to make Portsmouth a customer and kind of let it be known that we are looking around to see what our alternatives are. I did just recently visit a landfill facility up in Berlin, and I think initially, including myself, I thought, "Berlin, you must be kidding me." The reality is, talking to a few experts within the industry, they said Berlin, opening their landfill to the rest of the public, really is going to rock the New Hampshire community. They'd be willing to give Portsmouth a forty-dollar tipping fee, forty dollars per ton tipping fee. So of course, the argument is, how are we going to economize on hauling it there? And that's why I gave the argument that if the recycling center could help us in doing that, if we can consolidate the loads and then consolidate the haul. There are means. I actually ran number with, numbers with a few of the experts that helped me broker some of these deals, and we actually could feasibly break down, the cost could be sixty-two dollars a ton. There are other alternatives down in Haverhill, Massachusetts also, cost-sharing. I know that Seabrook is due to renew their contract in line with July two thousand and five as we are. So basically, I'm still doing shopping around, but the interesting thing is there are alternatives.
Could I ask one more, Your Honor?
Yes.
Where does, does the wood and the aluminum and the glass, does that go to one place or different places, and do we get some revenue from it? And if the wood burned, or, I mean, what happens to the wood? Just curious.
Yep. Currently, the wood is taken to a facility over in Elliott, Maine. They chip it up, and they use it as, they sell it themselves to a facility that uses it for fuel for their energy plants. We still pay for that, but we only pay thirty-five dollars a ton versus the landfill tipping fee at seventy-four dollars a ton. As far as the metal, we are getting rid of that at no cost. There are markets out there, but in order to tap into those markets, I'd have to haul it further, and therefore, I can't economically justify it at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Mayan, answer.
How's our labor cost for the first six months of this year compared to last year?
Well, I can say that we haven't incurred any overtime on the bulky waste collection weeks anymore, so right off the bat, I can say it has not increased. Having the designated employee that was accounted for, and there was no necessarily increased cost there.
So thirty-four thousand five hundred is tipping fee cost, or is that extra employee in there?
Those numbers were run solely on tipping fee, not even addressing personnel. So again, you could say there was a cost savings on not even doing the overtime anymore.
Perhaps when you do the report for us in December, the year-end report, whether we get in January, whatever, we could take a look, because now, I know that we'll have two times that we won't have the overtime for the spring and fall. That would be an interesting number for me to look at. Thank you.
Any other questions, Phil?
Yeah, just a question on the yard waste. Where is, is that going to the, the landfill, or is that being utilized for recycling? And what is our cost on that?
Yard waste is actually landfill banned. It's banned not because of hazardous or any other material, but because the landfills were filling up so quickly. So they decided to ban yard waste, and therefore, they can receive more municipal solid waste longer, so to speak. Currently, the yard waste is going to a facility up in Farmington. We actually were able to negotiate a better deal with them and almost cut our costs in half. We used to be spending twenty dollars a ton at the tipping fee, now we are at fourteen a ton for the tipping fee. It was a little cheaper earlier, but again, costs did increase.
Are they recycling it, or?
This facility solely does yard waste. They compost it, and then they find outlets and sell it.
Thank you, Sophie.
Any other questions? Yes, John?
When you determine the savings so far, have you factored in the cost of curbside pickup, labor at the city yard? And I'm sure you haven't factored in the cost to the citizen to wash and package those materials, but the only item that I see that has a potential for profit is cardboard, and we don't pick up cardboard in recycling. Is there a reason why?
First, to answer your question about, again, labor cost, the cost of hauling the material from the recycling center is absorbed in that one employee that was hired to do the curbside bulky waste pickup. His entire day is not just dedicated to the curbside pickup, that's why we manage the pickup schedules like we do. He's able to pick that up, bring it back to the recycling center, and then from there, he hauls other loads as appropriate and as assigned. As far as tapping into markets, cardboard is quite the marketable commodity. I have been able to tap into a market that if you collect, and we are actually tapping into this for the Monday night collection, we can collect cardboard combined with any fiber material. You can tear it, we'll recycle it. And that, we get actually twenty-five dollars a ton back. If the market goes up, we'll get more. Currently, we're getting forty a ton back. If it goes down below twenty-five a ton, the deal we have is we'll still get twenty-five a ton back. I only can do that with Monday night because of the current contracts in place, and the city does the Monday night collection.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, a councilor, what I have?
Sophie, several weeks ago, you had a seminar or a learning session on creating a compost pile. Now, was there literature passed out in reference to that, or was it just a, a news release?
I believe I had a news release. I even had Kinko's donate a little sign, and it wasn't so little, it actually spanned part of the fence at the recycling center that spoke towards that. I think it was a success in that it was the first, and it certainly was the foundation for future one.
I'd like to suggest that, you know, we follow up on that. There are people that I know that are creating compost piles, and, you know, they're, they're creating a little problem in certain neighborhoods. They're not covering it.
Okay.
The seagulls, the crows are transporting the top layer throughout the neighborhood, and, you know, it's, just a suggestion.
Okay. Thank you, Sophie, very much. That was very interesting. Did you have anything to say, Steve? A moral support.
Sophie's been doing an excellent job for, for the city and the department in, in dealing with our solid waste. As you can see, we are, we are reducing what's going to the landfill, which is our primary goal. We're recycling as much as possible. She finds markets that are unbelievable, she ferrets them out, and she's constantly working me over to, you know, well, let's look at this, and let's look at that. But I think from the solid waste aspect and the recycling aspect, we're right on line and moving forward to, to save money for the city and be good stewards of the environment.
Thank you, Steve. John, did you have anything you want?
I'll say, we'll just get back to you in, in December, we'll have another update.
Okay, very good. Thank you both very much. Now, we're down to the acceptance of the minutes of June second, two thousand and three.
Some move, Your Honor?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I, all opposed. We're down to the public comments session. We have four people that would like to speak. As you all know, it is three minutes apiece, and when Bob Sullivan puts up the thank you card, that means you're finished. The first one is Audrey Burnham, and she is going to speak regarding the cemetery committee.
Mayor Sorrell and members of the city council, I am Audrey Behrens, Chair of the Cemetery Committee. And Mayor Sorrell, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I thank you for all your support. As the Chair of the Cemetery Committee, it has given me great pleasure to work to help the city of Portsmouth enhance its historic past. In your hands are the invitations to our first big fundraiser. I hope you will all be able to attend Spirits Past and Present. As you can see, it will be a gala event taking place on the beautiful grounds of the John Langdon House, which have been donated for this occasion, and will feature reenactors, music, a silent auction, and hated refreshments and beverages. Please keep September seventh open for a wonderful time. Four hundred invitations have been printed, and we have room at Langdon for a hundred and fifty people, so please respond as soon as possible. Return envelopes are enclosed for your convenience, and additional invitations may be obtained by calling four three six five oh nine six. I look forward to any help and suggestions you might give me to make this event a success. Spirits Past and Present has caught the attention of the New Hampshire Society of Children, Sons and Children of the American Revolution under the Presidency of Hammonds Jackson, and they will be attending as well. I wish to thank our consultant, John Goyet, for his expertise and his sage advice, without whose help this could not be happening. He envisions a realistic goal of ten thousand dollars minimum net proceeds from our efforts. I also wish to thank the leadership of Jeffrey Lombard, Chair, our special gifts and sponsorship, and our Secretary Treasurer, Erwin Behrens. Everett Kern of DPW has also provided immeasurable help attending every monthly meeting of the committee. Judy Nevin of the South End has been invaluable in coordinating decorations and florals. And thanks to all the committee members for their faithful attendance. Finally, I want to thank Mr. Bohanko's office staff, particularly Judy Belanger in the Finance Office for establishing fiscal controls. The committee has much work ahead of it with many projects down the road to make the city-owned burial grounds historic treasures and attractions. September seventh is just the beginning. Any questions?
Thank you, Audrey, for all of your hard work. You're doing a wonderful job. Thank, thank you, dear. The next speaker is Walter J. Allen, and he is going to speak regarding recycling.
Evening, Mayor Sorrell and council. Good to see you all again. I want to speak specifically about the processing of the recycling material. I want, I feel compelled to be here tonight to present a side of recycling I don't think you'll ever get from the city reports. I conservatively estimate that each of the approximately eighty-five hundred households in Portsmouth spend a minimum of one hour per month preparing material for recycling. I have assigned this involuntary labor a value of ten dollars per hour. I consider this extremely conservative because I have not factored in the water and sewage cost that is associated with this mandate. This involuntary cost in labor and material services that you are mandating costs the city residents eighty-five thousand per month, one point oh two million dollars per year that you are mandating that we put in for processing this material for recycling. If the contractor or the city had to invest the labor and material to process this material, it would not be financially feasible. I suggest to you that there is no way that the city can save or make anything close to this by recycling. I would further suggest to you that the United States Constitution prohibits imposition of involuntary servitude. The suggestion I have received that because this was imposed by majority rule by representative government makes it valid would, by extension of this logic, make slavery legal again. I would like to suggest that we go back to voluntary recycling with possible rewards for participation, like lowering the water and sewer bills by five or ten percent. Garbage monitoring, excuse me, I gotta change pages here. With clear plastic bags, weighted inspection for compliance, and fines for non-compliance reminds me, as a friend of mine phrased it, as living in Russia. It would also increase the cost. We would probably have to hire another specialist to oversee the inspection, and another to manage the issuance and collection of fines. If you insist on leaving it mandatory, then I strongly suggest that you make arrangements for some other method of cleaning provided by the city or the contractor. This is what I consider involuntary labor parts. I do not object to separating unclean materials for collection. I would also suggest that items that are difficult to clean, like ketchup, mayonnaise jars, canned beet products, et cetera, are made optional. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
He didn't flag me.
Next speaker is Marty Cameron. He wants to speak on Mall Thirty-Three Impact.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Marty Cameron, four sixty-nine Ocean Road. The Thirty-Three Mall, which I call it, and the impact on the water, sewer, traffic, and the residents of Portsmouth. Recently learned, this Portsmouth water bill is going to be increased by ten cents a unit starting one July. The sewer increase is due next year. At a briefing conducted at the city hall by a professional team of municipal water planners, we also learned our water supply is in jeopardy a few years out. This would occur with no population, great impopulation increase, just normal progression. As a consequence, we have to develop new sources of water. Work is already underway to refurbish a well at the Peas Back Gate. We lost about twenty wells with the construction of the hospital and the insurance building on Bothwick Avenue. That underground water table is peculiar in the way it reacts to heavy construction and drained wetlands. The Thirty-Three Mall in Greenland is going to impact not only our water, sewer, and traffic, but the Great Bog, Pickering Brook, the Great Bay, and the Peas Aquifer. Upgrading our water supply on a twenty-year plan will be in the neighborhood of twenty million dollars. As the water usage increases, the sewer system and the treatment plant will also have to be updated. The mall development will hasten that impact as they want to use our water and sewer system. This information came forth at a meeting of the citywide neighborhood group at City Hall on the twentieth of May. It was revealed that the Cass Street neighborhood has a problem with a sewer gas odor. This complaint led to, led to a complaint of a strong sewer gas odor in the Sherburne neighborhood. The Cass Street area had a broken pipe which was being repaired. We learned that the Sherburne area odors happened after the Thirty-Three truck stop was tied into the Portsmouth sewer line, and apparently is an ongoing problem. So while Greenland reached the big tax revenue, Portsmouth residents get the sewer gas and the traffic quite a deal. We now find that Pickering Brook, which feeds the Great Bay and the surrounding wetlands, abuts the Thirty-Three Mall site. This was contaminated by trichlorethylene, TCE, in nineteen ninety-four. The source has been removed, however, the site still registers the trichlorethylene above acceptable levels. This present mall development site is located between the aquifers feeding our well in Greenland, the Portsmouth wells, and the wells on Peas. Portsmouth has already shut down water supplies, supplies due to MTBE contamination, and the Air Force has been working the Peas for the last ten years on the removal of TCE and other hydrocarbons at the Peas Trade Port with a cost over a hundred and sixty million dollars. We cannot make the water table, we can only drain or contaminate them. The Thirty-Three Mall developers' legal team will try to convince our city staff and our city council that this development with its sixteen-hundred-vehicle parking lot will be an asset to Portsmouth, create jobs, et cetera, et cetera, while it consumes thousands of gallons of water and dumps sewage into our system every day. All we will get is the smell and the rate increases.
Marty?
Now our roads, uh...
Marty?
Yep?
Can I stop?
Oh, boy, I went as fast as I could. Okay, I wanted to, uh, conclusion of this, I would really sincerely ask the council to have a public hearing on this Thirty-Three Mall development, because we have Portsmouth residents affected, we are all affected on regional impact, we are butters to this mall, and we deserve a public hearing. Before I leave the podium, could I have a minute to say something about the recycling center? I want to say how great it is, the people there are fantastic, they're busy all the time, but they're friendly and helpful. I think it's a great operation and a very good benefit to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. A lot of people don't realize, under the public comments session, you're only supposed to speak about one subject, okay? I was told that down the line here, but we'll put, we'll put the rules out there again. We put them out there a while back. A lot of people get up and they speak one, two, three subjects, so it's one subject. Our last and final speaker is James Daly.
My name is James Daly. I live at eight nine...
I live at eight-nine-three Middle Road. I am here to support the need for a referendum to allow the people of Portsmouth to vote their opinion on the suitability of the JFK site for the library, and also whether the Omni should be retained for other uses. I do not like the Broad Street, the other site either. Neither site is acceptable to me. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. That finishes out the public comment session. We're down to the public hearing, and the first one is the Ordinance Amending Chapter Five International Fire Code, Chapter Twelve International Building Code, and Chapter Fifteen International Plumbing Code. John, did you want to speak on this before we open up the public hearing?
I would ask, Your Honor, if Rick Hoppley, the Director of Inspections, be given ten minutes to give a summary of these changes because they are quite comprehensive, as you're well aware. It's many changes throughout our ordinances, and I think the public will get a better understanding of what is trying to be accomplished here. Rick has about ten minutes.
Ten minutes, Rick.
Thank you, Mayor Sherrell, as well as councilors. Richard Hoppley, Chief Building Inspector, and here tonight to present, as Mayor Sherrell has read amendments to Chapters Five, Twelve, and Fifteen of our ordinances of the city, new fire, building, plumbing, and mechanical codes. It was last here in nineteen ninety-seven when you adopted the nineteen ninety-six Boca National Building Plumbing Fire and Mechanical Codes, and a lot has changed since then. For one thing, there is no more Boca. We've been used to saying that for a long time. We'll have to get acquainted with ICC or International Code Council because... Because in January of this past year, of this year, excuse me, Boca, along with the International Council Building Officials and the Southern Building Code Council International, merged their three corporations into one corporation called the International Code Council. This has been a process that has taken well over ten years to achieve, and it was brought forward nearly a decade ago by the design professionals in this country who practice all around, all over the country, and who had to stock up on everyone's books. And they said to all three model code agencies, couldn't you possibly get together to author one set of comprehension, comprehensive model codes for the built environment that would be uniform nationwide? That they did. So the proposal before you this evening is to bring Portsmouth up to the times. And first, Chapter Twelve, which is our current building code chapter, we're proposing to adopt the two thousand International Building Code, which would replace the nineteen ninety-six Boca National Building Code. Also, I've had to separate this out into two parts because with the international set of codes, there is a separate code for one- and two-family dwellings. Under the Boca system, one- and two-family dwellings were also covered in the main Boca book. Now there are two books, so we had to split it out that way. The International Residential Code is an all-incumbent document, including building, plumbing, mechanical, and electrical. Chapter Fifteen currently is our plumbing and mechanical code. For years, the state has been on the Boca National Plumbing Code, and prior to adopting the current IPC, they were on the ninety-three Boca National Code is what our current ordinance is. In September, they adopted the two thousand IPC, and that's what I'm proposing that we move up to. We currently have the ninety-six International Mechanical Code. We will simply be updating it to the two thousand. International Fire Code, a document that we use in conjunction with the Building Code, dealing specifically with commercial occupancies that either store or utilize hazardous materials. The two books are used in conjunction with one another. Myself and Charlie Jones are into this document often. In addition, it also provides another tool for the Fire Marshal, the Fire Prevention Office, to inspect existing commercial buildings, too. I told Charlie we had to do this before he left. He had to get a dose of code writing in before he could leave. He's been working with us closely on that. In addition to the Building Code series of documents, we're updating also our Life Safety Code, which we use hand-in-hand with the Building Code as deemed by the state Fire Marshal, but means of egress to the two thousand edition, the National Electrocode, which the electricians in the state are licensed against to the two thousand-two edition, and the National Fuel Gas Code, another National Fire Protection Association document, which our Plumbing Mechanical Inspector, John Lenore, uses every day in overseeing the installation of the hundreds of mechanical equipment, gas-fired mechanical equipment that are present in this city. Also, we're updating our sprinkler standards, fire alarm standards, combustible and flammable liquid standards, and our oil-burning equipment installation standards. We have a joke in the office of what new restaurant comes each week to apply, and we have a... There's so many that we have a packet now we give out of all the information that's needed. And very high on the list is the compliance with the commercial kitchen venting and fire protection systems that are required under any commercial range hood system. And so that standard is being proposed to be updated to two thousand-one. Our masons are used to working with NFA two-eleven, which is the standard for chimneys and fireplaces. And I never would have dreamed that we'd be reviewing hangars. But next week, actually, we'll be doing a final inspection on the latest aircraft hangar at Peas, and we utilize NFA four-oh-nine on a regular basis every time a hangar comes to the city, a new hangar. Some important benefits to the new international series of books, better coordination between the model codes. The residential dwelling regulations are in one book. They have updated the wind, seismic, and snow loading. This area has gone from a forty-pound-per-square-foot snow load to a fifty. There's far more information in terms of accessibility in the model codes now, and so much more is being done to try to coordinate the model building code criteria with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Our aging population requires assisted living occupancies and daycare occupancies, not just for children, and these are better defined in the newer modern model codes. There's new requirements for habitable basements in residential occupancies. And as I stated earlier, the international codes are compatible nationally now, and the state of New Hampshire in September of two thousand-two adopted the IBC two thousand. The amendments before you, primarily administrative in nature, and they mirror what is on the books already for administrative amendments. Some of the technical amendments, we've really tried to keep them down. We've tried to soften a few of the areas that were pretty major changes from the Boca codes. We tried to work in different options. And we've also adopted the standards that the trades have been used to using. And also updated the IBC to be more compatible with one-on-one, Life Safety one-on-one. So I think I did the ten minutes. Is there...
Any questions?
Any questions? I know there's a lot of information.
I agree too, yeah. I think we're all set, Rick. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we'll open up the public hearing, and I'll read it one more time. Ordinance Amending, Chapter Five International Fire Code, Chapter Twelve International Building Code, and Chapter Fifteen International Plumbing Code. Do I have any first-time speakers? Please come forward to the podium. Second time around, do I have any speakers? Third and final time, before I close this public hearing, do I have any speakers? Closed. Now we're down to the Ordinance Amendments to Chapter Seven Vehicles, Traffic, Parking, Omnibus Parking Ordinance, April twentieth, two thousand-two, April seventeenth, two thousand-three. You want me to basket them?
Yes.
Alice, did you want to speak on it at all?
Madam Mayor, this is just, as you know, once a year, we bring back to the council various pilot programs that we've put on and throughout the city on limited parking, truck unloading zones, and fifteen-minute spaces. And when they appear to be working well, then we incorporate them into the ordinances, and we do that every year. And this is the time when the council gets a chance to look at it, ask any questions, and adopt the changes.
Thank you. There is six of them, and I'm going to basket them all together. Chapter Seven, Article Six, Section Seven, Period six-oh-one, Truck Loading, Unloading Zones Established. Number two, Chapter Seven, Article Three, Section Seven, Period three-two-seven, Limited Parking, Two Hours, Bridge Street, Both Sides, From Hanover Street to Deer Street. Number three, Chapter Seven, Article Three, Section Seven, Three-two-nine, Limited Parking, Four Hours, Bridge Street, Southerly Side, From Islington Street to Hanover Street. Number four, Chapter Seven, Article Four, Section Seven, Period four-oh-two, Areas Established, Designated, and Described, Bridge Street, Off-Street Parking Area. Number five, Chapter Seven, Article Three, Section Seven, Period three-two-six, Limited Parking, Fifteen Minutes, Deer Street, Two Spaces in Front of the Building Located at Twenty-Eight Deer Street. Section Six, Chapter Seven, Article Three, Section Seven, Period three-two-seven, Limited Parking, Two Hours, Deer Street, All Except for Two Spaces in Front of Twenty-Eight Deer Street. All right, now we'll open the public hearings. Do I have any first-time speakers? Please come forward. Second time around, do I have any speakers? Third and final time, before I close the public hearing, do I have any speakers? Closed. The last one is an Ordinance Amending, Chapter Seven Vehicles, Traffic, Parking, Section Seven, Period nine-oh-four, Summons Administration Fees, Section Seven, Period one-oh, one-zero-zero-four, Towing or Mobilization of Motor Vehicles for Non-Payment of Parking Fines, and Section Seven, Period nine-oh-one, Penalties. Do I have anyone that would like to come forward? Do I have any first-time speakers at all? Second time around, do I have any speakers? Third and final time, before I close the public hearing, do I have any speakers? Closed. All right, councilors, we're down to considerations of resolutions and ordinances. Second reading of Ordinance Amending, Chapter Five International Fire Code, Chapter Twelve International Building Code, and Chapter Fifteen International Plumbing Code. What is your wish? Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes, Your Honor, I move we pass second reading and schedule a third and final reading at the July fourteenth City Council Meeting regarding amendments to Chapter Five International Fire Code, Chapter Twelve International Building Code, and Chapter Fifteen International Plumbing Code.
Second.
Discussion. Being no discussion, we're all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Second reading of amendments to Chapter Seven Vehicles, Traffic Parking, Omnibus Parking Ordinance, April twelfth, two thousand-two, April seventeenth, two thousand-three. Here we go. Chapter Seven, I'm glad you don't come in often with this. Chapter Seven, Article Six, Section Seven, Period six-oh-one, Truck Loading, Unloading Zones Established. Number two, Chapter Seven, Article Three, Section Seven, Period three-two-seven, Limited Parking, Two Hours, Bridge Street, Both Sides, From Hanover Street to Deer Street. Number three, Chapter Seven, Article Three, Section Seven, Period three-two-nine, Limited Parking, Four Hours, on Bridge Street, Southerly Side, From Islington Street to Hanover Street. Number four, Chapter Seven, Article Four, Section Seven, Period four-oh-two, Areas Established, Designated, and Described, Bridge Street, Off-Street Parking Area. Five, Chapter Seven, Article Three, Section Seven, Period three-two-six, Limited Parking, Fifteen Minutes, Deer Street, Two Spaces in Front of the Building Located at Twenty-Eight Deer Street. Six, Chapter Seven, Article Three, Section Seven, Period three-two-seven, Limited Parking, Two Hours, Deer Street, All Except for Two Spaces in Front of Deer Street. I got them all?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Move to pass second reading of the actions to be incorporated in the parking ordinance as presented and hold third and final reading at the July fourteenth City Council Meeting.
Second.
Very good. Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes, I just have one question, Your Honor, and that's in reference to number five, which talks about the two parking spaces in front of Twenty-Eight Deer Street, the two fifteen-minute parking spaces. And if I could refer a question to the Chairman of the Traffic Safety Committee. Mr. Chairman, are there other businesses or retail establishments that have two fifteen-minute parking spaces in front of their places?
This Twenty-Eight Deer Street is several different businesses are located there. They're actually located on... The businesses on both sides of the street, and that worked out to be the best area. So it's not limited... When you have a fifteen-minute parking space, you don't have to be going into Twenty-Eight Deer Street. You can be going into Thirty, Thirty-two Deer Street. You can be going across the street and picking up there. So it makes it pretty nice for pickup and quick delivery.
Okay, I just misunderstood. I thought it was particularly far that Twenty-Eight Deer Street.
No.
Any other discussion? We ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Second reading of Ordinance Amending, Chapter Seven Vehicles, Traffic Parking, Section Seven, Period nine-oh-four, Summons Administration Fees, Section Seven, Period one-zero-zero-four, Towing or Mobilization of Motor Vehicles for Non-Payment of Parking Fines, and Section Seven, Period nine-oh-one, Penalties.
Your Honor?
Yes, Counselor Grasso?
I move that we pass the second reading of the amended ordinance as submitted and schedule a third and final reading at the July fourteenth City Council Meeting.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Your Honor?
I... Yes, Counselor?
This certainly seems to be a sensible thing to do, but I was wondering, does the city now not recover the costs it incurs for towing? Or the...
No, this is the admin fee, if I may, Madam Mayor. It increases it from ten dollars to twenty.
Okay. Fine.
Any other discussion before the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Presentation and considerations of written communications and petitions. A letter from Wendy... A letter from Wendy Seacat, Seacoast Mental Health Center, requesting permission to hold the annual Bridge Four Friendship Ten K Road Race on Saturday, October eighteenth, two thousand three. What's your pleasure?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Sandalakis.
Move the city manager with power.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? A letter from Joe Yeager. Did I pronounce that right?
Year ago.
Year ago? Uh, I was wrong. Coast Ploddy Act Cadillac, requesting permission to relocate its entrance to a point offset the West Philly entrance to the Army Reserve Headquarters.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Refer to the planning board with a report back.
Second. Very good. Discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? A letter from Eric Bessertim, Department of the Army, requesting permission to place an illuminated sign on city property outside of the State Armory along Market Street.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Move the city manager with power.
Second.
Your Honor?
Discussion.
Uh, I'd like to amend the motion to refer to the planning board.
Yes.
For report back.
Okay.
Is that, I will call that a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment. If the maker of the motion agrees.
And Sandalakis, you agree?
Agree, yes.
Okay, very good. Did we get a second on that?
Yes, I second it.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion on that?
We do have, Mayor, Your Honor?
Yes.
Yeah, we do have an ordinance in reference to illuminated signs, right?
That's right.
Yeah, it's good.
Yep.
That is a new historic. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? We're down to the city manager, and he has one item that requires action.
I think we already took care of that, Your Honor.
Oh, we already took care of that, everybody.
So, just one item, I just want to bring to your attention, we've rescheduled the, as requested of the City Council, the work session on the holiday parade for August eighteenth at six fifteen. Uh, and the other items in here are pretty self-explanatory.
Very good.
Any questions?
John, on any of the informational items? The Councilor Whitehouse and then Councilor St. Laurent?
Yes, somebody should make it public that the dedication of Panaway Park will be tomorrow at three o'clock in the afternoon.
Just it.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Counselor, I think Bill was going to say that.
Yes, I was, Your Honor.
I'm not going to be able to attend, but tell everybody my wishes are with them, because they all work very hard for that park.
Okay.
All right.
Your Honor, we know.
Any other discussion?
We know you want to be there.
I really do. Okay, then, uh, yes, Councilor McConie.
Could I address the legal department, Maran?
You certainly may do.
I just wanted it to be entered into the meeting, minutes of the meeting, that I do not agree with the city attorney's opinion on the Roberts rule.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. You're welcome. All right, then, we're down to the mayor. Any other? Nobody else? Okay. We're down to the mayor, and I have just one appointment. And as you all know, I gave you a copy of this two weeks ago, and I received no phone calls, just one. And, uh, but I want you to know right now that volunteerism is getting harder and harder to get good people. And we do try and interview each one that comes in now. And the, uh, just for consideration, Sandra, Sandra Durka, Adika, three, 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 Massey Street. All right, and that will be coming back at our next meeting for final vote. And that takes care of the matter night. Boy, we're rolling.
But did I ask the question, Your Honor?
Yes.
Is there a minimum residency requirement to get appointed to any of these positions?
Uh, what do you mean by, uh, number of years?
Minimum requirement, Your Honor.
All right, just let's not get sarcastic. She's been, all right, she's been here, uh, living in the city.
I'm not addressing this particular one, Your Honor.
Oh, all right.
I just wanted to know.
Let us do that, please.
There actually are some minimum requirements for some of the appointments.
Okay.
Not for this particular.
No, I wasn't referring to this one here. I just wanted to know if there were any minimum requirements for appointments, period. And I wasn't being sarcastic, Your Honor. I was just.
I thought you were talking about this way.
No, I was not, Your Honor.
And that's why I'm giving it to you people two weeks before. So if you have any complaints, I want you to call me like Bill did today. Your Honor? I apologize, Evelyn, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you.
I, I don't have any complaints, but I just didn't, I just felt that the community as a whole didn't realize that there was a vacancy here. And, um, I think that's why we're not seeing people volunteering, as you said. Um, I don't know what the solution would be to have people come in and, and sell out forms to say what committees they would be interested in should a vacancy occur, because, uh, I, I guess, from my standpoint, most people didn't know there was a vacancy on this commission.
I do that. I do take applications and I go out. Did we advertise this one at all?
We normally put it on the website, but because that person had just stepped down at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And we voted that vacancy, then you had already brought this one forward, so there wasn't a time to do that, because we already had that person drop in.
Okay. I, I will state here and now that the chairman of each one of these boards, whether it be Board of Adjustment, Planning Board, usually will come to me and tell me what's going on and ask me if there's a certain volunteer that comes forward that they're very interested in, uh, to look at the application. And the city manager and I have interviewed different ones, especially for the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board, right, John? So, uh, that's where we stand on that. But I, I think truly, um, Joanne, uh, if the chairman of the Board of the HDC knew that there was a vacancy, other people must have too.
Well, I'm sure some people did, but I'm just, my, my point is that regardless of what board it is, I think the community as a whole needs a chance to hear that there is a vacancy, so.
Well, other than advertising it, I don't know in which direction. I mean, I can go out and look in the corners.
No, no, I'm not, Your Honor, I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that when, when the, uh, we had the resignation, I think at that time, if we had just said there was an opening here and we'll wait for two weeks or a month and see what applications come forward at that time. You know, and then we'll see, maybe we would have had more than one person apply.
We could have done that too when the resignation came in.
No.
I didn't say that, that night, that there would be an opening.
No, but we had, that name already had come up.
Yeah.
Your Honor, if I might?
Right.
Uh, you know what we can do? I can work with you and maybe Kelly and I can work with your office, and we can do a standard press release that whenever there's an opening, we'll just issue a standard press release along with putting it on the webpage, so we'll work on that if that's okay with you, Your Honor.
Okay, very good. I do feel that some had concerns that she only lived in the city two and a half years. I did myself. We had a gentleman come in on the planning board that had only been in the city for about two years. And John and I interviewed him, and he turned out to be a marvelous person on the planning board. So, it's hot, it's hot. Yes, Bill?
Uh, yes, yes, Your Honor, just like to ask if on publishing this, if, there are two papers that have a wide circulation in the city, if we could post them, if it would be possible to post them both, uh, newspapers, if it would be?
We know most of our legal sources push them out.
It would be a press release.
It would be a press release, and it's up to the editor to determine if it's newsworthy.
Would that be considered a public, public service?
Typically, yes.
Information?
Typically.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
As a reminder, the residency requirement to be a city councilor is two years.
Right. You're absolutely right.
So. Well, I, I heard a discussion with this person that only lived in the city for two years, two and a half years. She's qualified to be a city councilor. I think she's certainly qualified to be a member of the HDC.
Yes.
Most of all, in here.
And she's very good, she's excellent. Peter Rice said she's to be marvelous, so.
Your Honor?
We'll take his word. Yes, Councilor McConie?
Just to clarify it, I was not referring to any particular individual when I asked my question. I do not know this individual. I did not say anything detrimental to her qualifications, period.
I misunderstood you when you came in with that question. I'm sorry, Evelyn. All right, let's get on with it here, uh, so we can get out of here. Uh, the Assistant Mayor, uh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I have before the council tonight the proposed amendment to the city manager's contract and move to authorize the mayor to execute the following, and it's the city manager's employment contract. It's a salary increase that was scheduled for July first, two thousand three, be delayed for six months until January first, two thousand four. Thereafter, the salary to be adjusted in accordance with the CPI November to November of the previous calendar year, which is exactly the same language that's in the contract now. Uh, vacation accumulation shall be limited to one hundred and eighty days, with the option of redeeming up to ten unused vacation days annually. Uh, and third, that the term, uh, term of employment agreement that's currently in force be extended two years from June thirtieth, two thousand six, to June thirtieth, two thousand eight. Further, that all conditions of the city manager's employment contract dated April eighteenth, two thousand one remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Discussion? Uh, yes, Brad.
Yeah, I think the city is fortunate to have someone of John Bohanko's caliber to be the manager. I'm very glad that we're going to have him for another five years. And by the time that term is up, I hope the, by his actions, this statewide property tax will be a historical footnote.
John said, hopefully. Uh, any other discussion? We ready for the vote?
Roll call, please.
A roll call? Roll call.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Councilor Grasso?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Heinz?
Yes.
Councilor Penelakis?
Yes.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Councilor McConie?
Yes.
Councilor St. Laurent?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrill?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Right. Now we're down to, uh, Councilor Whitehouse, and Councilor White, uh, Whitehouse would like to propose a motion. Go ahead, Councilor.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Your Honor, for allowing me to speak. Um, the question will be, do you support the JFK Parrot Avenue site as the location for the new library? And the motion will be, I move that the city council place the stated question onto the November fourth, two thousand three municipal ballot as a non-binding referendum question. Now, if I get a second, Your Honor, I'd like to speak on that.
Uh, you got your second.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Your Honor, before my fellow councilors vote against this motion, I just like to have those who'll be voting against ask themselves three questions. The first is, you'll notice it's a non-binding question. Now, you should say to yourself, while since it's a non-binding question, how important is it? So maybe I should support it. The third question you should be asking, the second question you should be asking yourself is, we voted at a previous ballot, the question was stated four and a half years ago, do you support the construction of a new library for the city of Portland? And it was overwhelmingly in favor, and I was one of those who voted in the positive manner. So you should be saying to yourself, if this question goes on the ballot, the same group of people will be supporting the library at the JFK Center, so they shouldn't have anything to worry about. And the third question the people should be, the councilor should be asking, that has got, that's planning on voting against this question, is that maybe this is not the total idea of Councilor Whitehouse. Maybe it's coming from one of the many organizations that he belongs to, or maybe it's coming from one of the many five committees that he's a member of, that the city, that the mayor has appointed me to. So, you know, take these three questions in mind before you vote no on this motion. End of speech.
Councilor Penelakis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I cannot vote for this unless Councilor Whitehouse would like to put the other fourteen sites that the library committee spoke of on this. It's not fair to only place one site on this ballot in a non-referendum.
Uh, you all done?
Yep.
Uh, Councilor Heinz?
Thank you, Your Honor. As a member of the library committee and recognizing the great deal of work that has gone on to certify the best site in the city, considering, uh, the fourteen sites that were examined, uh, I would not vote for any further delay in getting a library building started. So I will not support this motion.
Councilor Grasso?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I will not support the, um, motion either, because, uh, I think that if, uh, this is just a means to delay our movement forward with the library, because it does not say do, um, favor the JFK site or another site. It does not come up with an alternative site. And I think that's the whole issue here. We've, we've looked, and there doesn't seem to be an alternative site that the city now owns that, on which to put a library building.
Thank you, Joanne. Brad?
Yeah, I, uh, I think in general, the council is elected to, uh, assume certain responsibilities, to learn about things, and to make decisions that the council believes are best serve the interests of the city. And I think the motion really goes to the heart of what representative government is all about, that as you people elect us to spend the time to learn about these things and to do what we think is best. Most of the people in the city don't know who's on the city council, and many of them don't know what we do, and many of them don't care, and many of them may want a library, but they don't know the particulars about the site that's been proposed. That's, that's the job of, of the planning board and the council, it's the job of the new library building committee, which has worked for, for many, many years on this. So, wh- while I'm somewhat sympathetic to Councilor Whitehouse in that this wouldn't be a harmful thing, uh, it would delay things, I think it's a, a delegation of our responsibility that is not necessary or indicated. So I'll vote against the motion.
Thank you, Brad.
Assistant Mayor?
I'm going to vote against the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Your call.
Uh, Councilor St. Laurent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I have mixed emotions about this, uh, ordinance, uh, this proposal. I'm not sure, being a non-binding referendum, what it'll prove. Uh, but on the other hand, um, since the library will probably not even start till next year, this might not be a bad idea just to get some feelings from the public in general, uh, the voting public in general. But like I say, it, it's mixed emotions. I've, I've heard it back and forth so many times, and I've always been in favor of the Bridge Street lot, but, um, I'm not sure whether we're beating a dead horse here or not, Your Honor. So, with mixed emotions, I probably will vote against this.
Very good. Uh, Councilor McConie?
I'll remind everybody that the last time that this was on the ballot, it was a non-binding referendum question. It's exactly the same as this one is, where, I intend to support it, not because I am that much opposed to the Parrot Avenue site as I am opposed to the library at this time, but I will support it because, as Councilman St. Laurent pointed out, this isn't even going to affect anything until next year. So I don't know why everybody is so frightened of this possibility. And as I said, the first one that approved the library was a non-binding referendum.
Uh, Councilor Whitehouse?
Believe me, there's a tremendous amount of controversy out there on this issue. In all my years involved, I've never, never seen so much talk. They're not coming to the meetings. They're saying to me as a representative, do not let this happen. let this happen. I spoke last week in this council chambers in reference to an issue of preserving the JFK Center as a historical site, related to Resolution, I think, one oh nine, or one oh six, one oh six. There was a proposal brought forward with schematics, data, information, pictures about the Bridge Street site. This person had spent a tremendous amount of time. It was a two and a half hour meeting, there was many people speaking about just maybe we should be looking around, not only the Bridge Street site, but look once more. It's been three years since we've looked at other sites, and there are other sites that's become available out there, and I say to the U and the Building Committee and the Library Trustees, just slow down a little bit before you make your final decision and take one more look. I've attended meetings, and I've attended hearings, and I have a packet home, probably two inches thick, I'm the only one many times sitting in the background at the Library Building Committee meetings held in the Vaughn Room at the library, not even the press is there, and I'm taking notes, and I'm listening. So I, I really am up on what's going on, and I think that we should slow down a little bit and take another look at other sites. Many of the, uh, many of the meetings, in fact, I'm gonna refer to a meeting that was held with the Planning Board on February twenty-sixth. There was over a hundred people in this council chambers, there was forty-one speakers, and we all have the minutes of that meeting. Out of those forty-one speakers, there were ten that were either members of the Library Building Committee, Library Trustees, or people who are employed in the city. So take those ten from the forty-one, and you have thirty-one real speakers in reference to the library issue. Seventeen either opposed it outrightly or questioned it. So that's over half, that's over half, in a meeting that was set up to look at Resolution one oh six, the historic nature of the JFK Center. So I'm saying, this is not the end. I know my motion is gonna fail, but this will start the other moves of a signature page, and four hundred signatures will almost mandatory be, allow it to go onto the ballot.
Uh, yes, Councilor Grasso?
Um, I think the, um, that meeting with the Planning Board was to deal with Planning Board issues, we went into the one oh six issue at that time, and, um, we meet in Conference Room A, Councilor Whitehouse. Your Honor, I'd like to move the question.
Uh, we are ready to move the question.
Roll call?
Roll call. Will you please read the motion again, Kelly?
Sure. Move that the City Council place the stated question onto the November fourth, two thousand and three municipal ballot as a non-binding referendum. Do you support the JFK slash Parrot Avenue site as the location for a new library?
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
No.
Councilor Grasso?
No.
Councilor Long?
No.
Councilor Heinz?
No.
Councilor Pandalakis?
No.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Councilor Marconi?
Yes.
Councilor St. Laurent?
No.
Mayor Sherrell?
No.
Seven to two, Phil.
All right, does anyone have any miscellaneous or unfinished business?
Your Honor? Yes, Councilor Grasso? I'd like to take just a minute and have the, um, City Manager give us the response about the use that was, a question was brought about the use of the facilities, whether it was, uh, residents versus non-residents. We have the answer here, but I think the public would like to know.
I would defer to the City Attorney who wrote the, uh, the opinion.
Thank you.
Uh, Bla?
Yes, Your Honor. At the time that the, uh, city entered into the, uh, rather complex set of agreements that allowed us to create the Spinnaker Point Recreational Complex, um, we obligated ourselves as a city with the Spinnaker Point Condominium Association to limit use of that facility to, uh, city residents, uh, excepting only city employees who are members of our city wellness program. In other words, it is prohibited by our agreements with the Condominium Association to allow non-residents to use the facility.
Question for the City Attorney?
Uh, yes, Assistant Mayor?
Who's the attorney on the other side?
Whoever he was, he did a heck of a good job for the association.
Wasn't that the attorney that asked the question?
All right, now, Alex. Um, okay, does that, who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Very good. And we'll see you all when, John?
Uh, July fourteenth.
July fourteenth, and there'll be just one meeting in July.